Good evening. My name is Brandon Monk, serve as the Chair of the Frederick County School Board, and it is 6:00 PM on Tuesday, March the 21st, and I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. We have an agenda before us. Any amendments? Dr. Hummer, board?
No, sir.
All right. Any amendments?
Motion to approve the agenda as presented, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All right. Motion to approve the agenda as presented. We have a second. All in favor of doing so, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We have an agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the County School Board of Frederick County, Virginia, enter a closed session meeting for the following: to review and discuss individual personnel matters, including appointments, resignations, administrative leave, leaves of absence, substitutes, and volunteers pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.23711A1, and to review and discuss individual student matters that would involve specific students and particular information contained in their scholastic records, including requests for release from compulsory attendance for religious reasons and violations of the Code of Conduct pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.23711A2, and I do so move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to move into closed session for the reason that the Vice Chair mentioned. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of doing so, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we're in closed session. We're convened approximately 7:00 PM.
I move that the board reconvene from closed session.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to reconvene from closed session. All in favor of doing so, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we are reconvened.
I move that, to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were discussed in the closed session, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed session was convened were heard, discussed, or considered by the school board.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion has been made and properly seconded. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Lake?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Comstock?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
All right.
And I move that the board recess its meeting until 7:00 PM.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to recess until 7:00 PM. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we're in recess.
I move that the board reconvene its meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to reconvene. All in favor of doing so, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we are in session.
Mr. Chairman, we have two motions coming out of closed session. I move to approve the personnel actions as recommended by the Superintendent.
Second.
The motion that has been made and properly seconded to approve the personnel actions as recommended by the Superintendent. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes.
And, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the release of students A, B, C, D, and E from compulsory attendance for religious reasons.
Second.
We have a motion that has been made and properly seconded to release students A, B, C, D, and E from attendance for religious reasons. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, that is closed session for us. Now, the next item on our agenda is the moment of silence, and this evening, we'd like to dedicate our moment of silence in memory of Ms. Brenda Effler, who was a bus driver for our division. So please join me in a moment of silence in Ms. Effler's memory. All right, please join me in a salute to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next, we have a consent agenda before us. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right.
Second.
We have a motion to approve, in a second, the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, consent agenda is approved. Based upon the actions of the board this evening and personnel upon the Superintendent's recommendation, the Superintendent has a special recognition. Dr. Hummer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am proud to announce our new hearing officer, Mr. Mike Boland. He will be our new school division's hearing officer and division safety and security administrator. So, Mr. Boland, if you don't mind coming on up to the podium, that would be great. Mr. Boland brings a great deal of experience in working with students and their families to his new position. In addition to serving 11 years as a special education teacher at James Wood High School, Mr. Boland has eight years of experience as a school-level administrator, including serving the last seven years as the Assistant Principal at James Wood High School. Mr. Boland will transition to his new position in early April, and please join me in welcoming Mr. Boland into his new role. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. All right. Next, we will move on to additional recognition.
Okay, good evening, Mr. Chair, school board, community. This is a great time for us to acknowledge our students and recognizing them for all of the great things that they are doing. So before we proceed, I would like to ask that everyone stay here through the entire program out of respect for each individual who is going to be recognized. Once we have completed all of the presentations, we will give you an opportunity to leave and enjoy the rest of your evening. So first up, we have a couple Class IV state wrestling champions. Frederick County Public Schools is home of three 2023 state wrestling champions, one from Shorando High School, Keegan Judd, and Anthony Luciani, as well as James Wood High School student Colton Bender, recently captured state wrestling championship titles. Judd has now won three straight championships. Luciani has won two state championships, and Bender's state championship was his first he's won. Congratulations. Can we give them a round of applause? So now, what we would like to do, we are going to introduce the Shorando High School wrestlers first. We're going to have them come up. You're going to take a picture with Mr. Monk and myself. We're going to hand you your certificate. If you can wait up here, we'll take a picture as a group, and then we'll jump into James Wood, and then we have another announcement after that. Thank you.
Anthony Luciani from Shorando High School, and Head Coach from Shorando High School, Brian Kibler. If we could have James Wood High School student Colton Bender come forward, and Assistant
Next up, Millbrook High School senior Nick Hayden won the state championship in the 1,000-meter race on February 28th at the Virginia High School League's Class IV State Indoor Track and Field Championship. Hayden has signed to run track at Columbia University next year, and we are very proud of him. So, Nick, thank you very much. Come on up.
Nick Hayden, Millbrook High School. If we could have the coaches, Joe Hall and Jamie McCarthy also come forward, please.
All right, that concludes our recognitions. Let's give them another round of applause, and thank you very much.
All right, thank you. For students and coaches and parents, if you have other places to be this evening, this would be the time. You are more than welcome to stay, but you are welcome to leave as well. All right, next, we have reached the portion of our meeting for citizen and staff comments. The Frederick County School Board is pleased to receive public comments at each monthly meeting. In order to allow the board sufficient time for its other business, the total time allowed for public comment will generally be limited to 20 minutes. Individuals speaking to the board will be allotted three minutes, and those individuals representing groups or organizations will be allotted five minutes with one representative per group. Upon recognition by the Chair, the speaker should clearly state their last name, residing district, and subject matter of their comments. All comments are to be addressed to the Chair. The board will receive comments but will not respond to questions or engage in a dialogue. This is an opportunity to be heard, and the board will refer any issues or concerns to staff or the appropriate committees. The local school board is committed to showing appropriate respect and courtesy to all citizens, and speakers are expected to show appropriate respect and courtesy to the board in return. Members of the audience are not permitted to interrupt the speaker or a meeting by asking questions or making comments. Our school board meetings are taped recorded for the purpose of clarification and development of the official minutes. With that, we have two speakers here. First is Karen Dredsky. If you could come forward, limit your comments to three minutes or less, and state your name and magisterial district. Ms. Dredsky, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members, Dr. Hummer. I'm Karen Dredsky, and I'm from the Gainesboro District. Welcome, Dr. Hummer. I'm so excited that you're here, and I'm excited that I got to meet you, and I hope that other parents will take advantage of your tour around the county to all the schools, and will come in and meet you as well. This evening, I just had a couple of things that I wanted to bring up. The first one was, in the past, I've thanked all of you for getting board docs up and getting videos, so that when we couldn't attend in person, we would still be able to either watch the show, the show, well, the meeting. Sometimes it is a show. From home, as well as afterwards if we're unable to attend, and I appreciate that. And I especially would like to thank you for starting to put some of the committee meetings up. I was excited to be able to catch the Finance Committee meeting kind of out of the corner of my eye while I was working this past week, and that was important to me because I'm interested in what's going on with the budget, like a lot of folks. It was a little bit difficult finding the presentation, which I later on found underneath the budget information versus the meeting information, but I did find it, and that was really great. From that, I want to say that there was one thing that I wanted to bring up, because I know Mrs. Camery thought it was really important, and she brought it up several times. And from a citizen's perspective, I want to make a little bit of a correction, because she is correct. We hear many of us as citizens get up here at this time of year, and we start looking at things like, we can see what our total budget is that you're asking from the Board of Supervisors to provide. We divide that by the total number of students, and it gives you a cost per head per student. And Mrs. Camery is correct that it is not comparing apples to apples when we compare that to what is on the state website, because the state website doesn't use all the same criteria. But I would like to say to all of you that when we are, as citizens, get up here and we say, hey, this is what it costs per student, that we actually are accurate. We may not be accurate at comparing it to what we see on the state website, because the state website, I'm sure, doesn't know exactly how many buildings every school's got, a division's got, doesn't know how many teachers every single division's got, doesn't know how much our maintenance is on our buildings, et cetera. So it's looking for things that are common across all of the schools in our state. However, when the bottom line comes down to is, if we took that number that the state gave us, multiplied it by all of the students, and that's how much money we gave the school district to operate, it wouldn't be enough. So the only logical way to break it down is to take that full budget and divide it by the number of students, which means it changes every year. Changes as our population goes up and down, it changes as our costs go up and down, it changes if we have big capital expenses one year and we don't have them another year. But I want to say that, as a citizen, that it really is truly a measure that is accurate. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker is Alan Schaefer. Come forward, state your name, magisterial district, and limit your comments to three minutes or less, please.
Alan Schaefer, Shawnee District. Three inappropriate relationships in as many months. I was standing right here three months ago and told you, all of you, that if you didn't take a hard line on this, you were all culpable. You have failed to educate our children, and now you are failing to keep them safe. At least this time, we have a Superintendent who's not trying to cover it up. These are the results when schools get everything they ask for with no accountability. When you allow teachers to gang up and harass parents for speaking their mind, these are the results. The teachers have more power than the parents of the students they teach. They've put up every roadblock to keep the parents out of schools, and this is the result. Well, guess what? The last time I was here, I spoke the words knock-knock. I can imagine you now have the full attention of the State Education Board. My suggestion to you is I would go back to the basics. If it doesn't have something to do with reading, writing, history, math, or science, cut it now, because you have failed to educate our children, and you are failing to keep them safe. Whether it's from the masks that me and my wife have been telling you that you still hand out to children that have been recalled by the FDA, bullying children for standing up for their constitutional rights, or back to the first case of an inappropriate relationship, you have failed to act. At this point, these aren't isolated incidents, they are a pattern of negligence. All of you have may have opened yourselves up to personal liability. And what is the answer? A training program. Please tell me how you are going to be able to train someone not to commit a felony if they don't already know better.
Thank you. That's all that we had sign up for public comment from the board. Next, we have reports. Report of the Superintendent, Dr. Hummer.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have a couple items here that I would like to report out. I would like to start with a statement that I have prepared in response to recent incidents. Since the end of January, administrators at three of our schools have become aware of isolated incidents in which staff members have allegedly engaged in inappropriate sexual contact or interactions with students. In each instance, the school sent communications to inform parents and staff of the alleged misconduct. After being notified of the third incident last week, I sent a communication to the entire Frederick County Public Schools community to reiterate our policies that strictly prohibit impropriety or the appearance of impropriety between staff and students. Although these incidents are isolated and under ongoing review, we have taken some preliminary and immediate actions to reiterate to all staff the importance of complying with our policies and meeting the high standards of conduct that we expect from all employees. Those actions include issuing a memo to all staff reiterating school board policies regarding student-staff interactions and maintaining appropriate boundaries, requiring all employees to complete additional training regarding student and staff boundaries, and requiring all principal department heads to review policies and expectations regarding appropriate and professional student and staff boundaries with all staff members at upcoming building and department meetings. Finally, I want to encourage anyone, including students, who may have a concern about interactions or activities between a staff member and student, to immediately bring their concern to the attention of a school principal or department head, so we can continue to provide a learning environment that is conducive in helping all students succeed. I also want to reiterate and thank you, Mr. Monk, for the acknowledgement of our death of one of our beloved bus drivers, Brenda Effler. She was an amazing bus driver that dedicated 13 years to Frederick County Public Schools, and I don't think words can say how much we are going to miss her, and just thank her very much, and so please keep her family in your thoughts and prayers. And I will have additional information for you as it arrives. So thank you, Mr. Monk, for doing that. So you will see in front of you that we had some challenge coins created for our students that are currently in the criminal justice program at Dowell J., so we had those coins created for each of you, so please take those with you. We're very excited about our students and that, as they go through that program, and thank you very much for our local sheriff's office for partnering with us for the program and creating pathways for our students, so we're really excited about that. I also wanted to reiterate, I've been having a lot of success of getting out into the community and speaking with many community stakeholders, principals, staff, students, and I'm going to be continuing that journey with my entry plan. It's hard to believe that it's almost about halfway through. I think about the end of June will be my 100 days, and it's flying by. I feel like I've been here for six months. It's been an absolute journey. I say that very positively. It's been great and amazing, but if you notice on the webpage, I did create an entry plan link, so please take a look at that. I'll have my entry plan, my presentation, and there is a link on there. If you're not able to make it to any of my listening tour events, there is a survey that you can fill out. There's a Google form on there, and just answer the three questions. What do you want to see start? What do you want to see stop? And what do you want to see continue here in Frederick County? So please go in, I take your feedback very, very seriously, and I'm looking forward to engaging in the community in a more exclusive manner, and it is going to be something I'm going to be doing beyond my entry plan as well. So looking forward to those engagements, and thank you very much again for this opportunity. I also want to acknowledge our Human Resources Department. They put on an amazing career fair last week, and it was on Saturday, March 11th, at Robert Ailer Middle School. School administrators had the opportunity to meet and interview over 70 candidates. Seventeen offers have been extended, with eight of those so far have agreed to those offers, and hopefully they will join us in the 23-24 school year, and hopeful for the others to join us as well. So I want to acknowledge our HR department, as well as our administrators that helped us out for that event, and it was very, very successful. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. And you know I couldn't finish this up without commending more of our students. That is something that I'm very proud of for all the great work that our students do, and I did have some more acknowledgements here. So Frederick County had had 53 students travel to James Madison University for the Shenandoah Valley Regional Science and Engineering Fair. It's very, very successful. In total, we had seven gold medals, four silver medals, five bronze medals, and seven special awards totaling over $500 in cash prizes. Just absolutely amazing. We have some great students. Our four gold medal winners in the senior division are eligible to compete at the Virginia State Science and Engineering Fair in April at Old Dominion University, so fingers crossed they do well and bring home some more trophies to show off. And our three gold medal winners in the junior division are eligible to compete at the Thermo Fisher Scientific Junior Innovators Challenge. So again, very proud of them. Lastly, the Family Community and Career Leaders of America, the FCC LA, chapters at James Wood High, Millbrook High, Shorando High, and Byrd Middle School, had outstanding performances on projects connected to FCC LA national programs. Additionally, James Wood High School is a Virginia FCC LA Leadership Foundation mini-grant recipient, and these chapters will be recognized at the State Leadership Conference in April, and congratulations to our students and their sponsors. So thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Hummer. I will share, and I speak on behalf of the board, appreciate your comments around the incidents, and we take these very seriously and appreciate the sharing information as that first step, and want to make sure that we are doing the best that we can to make sure our students are safe moving forward. So thank you, Dr. Hummer. All right, next, we have the report of the Assistant Superintendent for Administration, Dr. Abby.
Good evening, members of the board. Dr. Hummer, public who's in the audience and public out there. My pleasure tonight is actually to speak to you about James Wood High School. You haven't had an update since December, so I, Dr. Hummer asked if I would be willing to share with you some of the changes that happened, and I said sure, and as I spoke with Mr. Kenny and learned of the magnificent updates that he had done in the past with super slides and renovations and everything, and I thought, oh my, I was too quick to say yes. But I'm pleased to be here, but I think the important thing I would like to look at, as we look at the picture of the old James Wood entryway, is the change. And as we do so, I'll have some slides for you, so you won't go away empty-handed without seeing progress. But what I've been taken by in listening and sitting with Mr. Kenny and his team, and also with the James Wood High School administration, as they move through this very elaborate process of living in the building as it's being altered right before their very eyes, is the operative word of change. So I thought it would be kind of interesting to look back and look at some facts that for, in the 1950s, and we're talking about more high schools, in the 1950s, each of the magisterial districts had its own high school. So Frederick County had six high schools all at one time. If you go back to the 20s, each magisterial district was its own school district, so you had six school districts. Well, now you have one school division, three high schools, okay? And I call them affectionately the Three Sisters, okay? And so tonight, I'm talking about the oldest of the Three Sisters, and that would be James Wood High School. Built in 1980, it has had two additions placed on it. It was, one was done in 1992 and one in 1996. But basically, the building itself has been a great leader of buildings for your high schools. It's been there for now a little over 43 years, and amazingly, it was built in 1980. In 1983, on January 1st, the Internet was born. Now, that changed the world, and it's continued to change at light speed since that time. What hasn't changed is James Wood High School. Okay? There she is, the sister who sat there was first the school on the hill, all right? And there she has sat, serving you for these 43 years, asking little of you, a repair here, a repair there, a little prop up now and again. But basically, she sat there, and then in, it became time to really take a look at it, and so the renovation began in 2021. The process began to take the sister and give her a facelift, and to add to her a little bit. And so that is what I really want to talk about tonight for you. What we have is the changes that you've heard about, and we'll take a look at as we can see some of the changes here happening in September of 2022. The site work is dramatically changing, expanding so that you will have more access, better flow, better appropriate parking, the types of things that were frustrating as the world grew and James Wood High School stayed as it was. There'll be 12 new classrooms, as you know, and this will provide space for 240 new students. And then there are massive renovations. The expansions themselves are going to take 39,000 square feet of expansion, and that's going to include, as I mentioned, the 12 new classrooms. You're going to have new administrative offices, a new security entrance, new guidance offices, a health suite, and ADA-compliant gym concourse. The nice part about it is it's going to take what's already encased in those old hallways and centralize it and move it in a way that you're going to see the building start to have a different pulse, and a different flavor, and a different feel as you go into it. It's becoming modern, so it is now catching up with all that happened since the Internet began just a short period after she was built. You're going to see larger classrooms, you're going to see an increase in the fully-equipped science labs, you're going to see wider corridors, you're going to You're going to see a media center at the center of the building, which is great because if you can ask any media specialist in the United States in any school district and ask them, what's the most important part of any school? And they will tell you, the media center. And that is where the hub of learning begins, and for them, it is where it begins and ends, and everything else expands out of that. And if you ask the teaching corps around in a school where there is a great media program going, they will concur because that is the place where they all move through and move back out to do their instruction. There'll be a new cafeteria, much more modern than the one we have right now. The guidance areas and the health areas will, as I said, be centrally located so they're not in disparate parts of the building. You'll have new data wiring, which will help move the Internet and technical instruction through the building better, new ED lighting, and a lot of ADA enhancements, including the bleachers. And then the work also includes new exterior windows and doors and new security features. So, not only will the building look more comfortable, it will, as you can see it here growing in November, it will start to also have a different flow to it, and hopefully that flow will take the energy needed and make it into a massively fun instructional environment. And as I said, it was started in '21. Everyone has invested 72-plus million dollars in the project, and we are looking to see the closure of the project in the fall, summer, fall of 2025. So, we are not there yet. We're moving into the second summer of a lot of work where you're going to see the changes in this building. You begin to hear, start to see the entranceway take shape now, and the classroom intersection takes shape, the parking lot, some are done, the flow will be better, and in the end, you will end up with this magnificent building that is going to be a centerpiece, and the older city sister will now be young again. So, it's my pleasure to answer any questions I can for you, but hopefully, this has been informative, and we will have more updates, especially after the summer's work.
Questions for Dr. Abby related to his report?
Oh, this is the magic. Well, I'm here keeping your attention. The sleight of hand is happening over here. Okay, so what is happening now is Dr. Angelo has just changed me. This is my hook. I must leave. But I will stay for questions if you have them.
I think Dr. Angelo is IT professor over there.
He's even, notice how he even changed my nameplate?
Wonderful, all right.
Well, thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. Abby. We'll move to the Assistant Superintendent for Instruction or Technology and IT, Dr. Angelo.
Necessity is the mother of invention, isn't that right, Mr. Monk? Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Hummer. Pleased to introduce members of our team that include stakeholders from the schools as well to talk to you about our multi-tiered systems of support and how we're trying to make that more visible in our schools. For those of you who have been on the board for a little while, Mr. Lake certainly is well-versed in tiered systems of support, and all of you had a little bit of an introduction to it maybe last year, last April, and that we've talked through it a bit, but we're going to go a little bit more detail this evening and really share with you how we are rebooting tiered, multi-tiered systems of support since we are now out of the challenges of COVID-19 and the pandemic and the challenges that that brought with us. So, without further ado, I am happy to introduce Mrs. Angie White, who is our supervisor of early childhood education.
Good evening. I'm very fortunate to be here to help explain the incredible work our elementary coaches and specialists have completed this year. You will have the opportunity to hear from several people who will share this journey. Each month, staff here from elementary instruction, special instructional services, and our Division VTSS coaches have planned together and met with instructional coaches, IRTs, Title I reading and math teachers, and literacy coaches to develop systems and structures consistently implemented in all of our elementary schools. These structures align with multi-tiered systems of support or MTSS. As you see on the screen, one of the goals in our INSPIRE 2025 strategic plan is student success. This has been the motivator for all of this collaborative work. Each one of our students deserves to have supports in place to move them forward academically, socially, and behaviorally. Why this work at this time? There were several factors considered: new staff on our teams here in central office, many teachers in new roles, as well as new administrators. We also had the impact of the pandemic when many of our specialists were teaching virtually or in classrooms and needed some time to acclimate back to their support roles. And then we had feedback that was shared that showed we needed consistent supports and practices to help student success. And the work began. Aligned organizational structure was the first component we addressed. Time was spent on delineation of roles to help our support teams reconnect with each other, revisit their roles, and how they can provide support in their schools. We then focused on structures for meeting student needs at the building level through MTSS. Teams worked together to show how the essential components of VTSS are implemented at the building level and made their thinking visible. We then realized we had some gaps and misunderstandings. And now, I will pass this along to Rita Mariner, who is one of our VTSS coaches.
Good evening. Gaps and misunderstandings led us back to MTSS. Using our data, we realized we needed to involve our building-level principals. And... Oh, look there. It's going to click all of them. And to look at the health of our triangle. As you know, 80% of our students should find success with Tier 1 instruction. Aligning structures using data are just two ways to improve the health of the triangle. Making structures visible led us to developing decision trees for different types of data meetings. The work being done so far not only supports our student success goal for INSPIRE, but also embodies the competencies for both staff and students that we aspire to in Frederick County Public Schools. We now like to welcome Dr. Mike DeDario from Evendale Elementary to share a principal's perspective on this process, followed by Nicole Surface, Indian Hollow Elementary, and Anne Nguyen, Bass Hoover Elementary Instructional Resource Teachers.
The hardest part of this whole presentation was her announcing my name. But you did well, very well. I did give her a secret like the old nursery rhyme, "Hi-ho, DeDario." So, it's the easiest way to remember my name. So, good evening, and thank you for this opportunity this evening to share a bit about Evendale's journey implementing a multi-tiered system of support. Evendale recently assembled a team and held a universal data meeting, which is one of the four types of data meetings that was on one of the previous slides. A universal data meeting is held to review data at the school level to take a holistic look at how the students of the school are performing at a Tier 1 level, which is the instruction that all students receive at their grade level. During this meeting, we are not looking at specific grade levels or specific classrooms or specific students, but again, looking from a whole-school perspective. For this meeting, we gathered and reviewed multiple reading and math data points, including iReady, iStation, PALS, and VKRP. Oops, I'm a slide behind. There we go. So, what did we discover through this universal data meeting? As a result of holding this meeting, we discovered that our triangles are upside down. We hope that 80% to 90% of our students are responding to our Tier 1 instruction, but right now, that is not the case. We are making progress towards that, but we're not quite there yet. Additionally, we found that students at Evendale are making really good progress in reading, but our math growth has been stagnant over the past couple of years. We have a really strong reading intervention program that we have put in place over the past two years, and we've realized that we need to do the same for math, and we are actually currently piloting a program for the rest of the year to see what kind of success we have in assisting our students in math. So, what will we do to address our findings? At the division level, we are implementing a multi-tiered system of support. The division is helping us by providing the needed structure that was seen in one of the earlier slides, and by providing professional development for all of our teachers to ensure that they are up to date and current on their Tier 1 instructional practices. As a school, Evendale is continuing to hold universal data meetings three times per year, where we look at data at the school level to assess our Tier 1 effectiveness. And we have also begun to implement a backward design process that will eventually lead us to be able to hold grade level and individual student data meetings. We have started by organizing by grade level all of our assessments that we give each quarter, putting them into one document, as a kind of a sample up there behind you on the slide. And once we have them in place, we will then be able to begin to schedule data meetings according to when various assessments are given at each grade level. Universal data meetings are the foundation that will lead us to individual student meetings, where we can decide if intervention is needed, what type of intervention, the length of intervention, type of intervention, and also help us to monitor the effectiveness of our Tier 1 instruction, help us to monitor our interventions and their effectiveness, and to make changes along the way as needed. Why are we creating this multi-tiered system of support and putting it in place? First, we are doing it to create consistency across all schools in our division. This system will ensure that we are looking at common data points, asking the same questions, and responding with similar Tier 2 and Tier 3 interventions. But most importantly, it's about student success. A multi-tiered system of support will allow us to better monitor student academic progress and help us to respond accordingly and provide interventions when needed. I thank you for your time, and at this time, I'm going to introduce Nicole Surface from Indian Hollow.
Good evening. At the school level, we're using the systems thinking framework to consider how to support all of our students, both at and beyond the Tier 1 level in various areas. Academically, behaviorally, and socially emotionally, really focusing on the whole child. We're working collaboratively to think about what data, practices, and systems are currently in place or lacking to support both our students and teachers. Each of the identified types of meetings allow us to use data to be purposeful and focused on identifying universal or school level, grade level, and student level strengths and needs starting at Tier 1. This practice is a continuous cycle of making database decisions, implementing them, monitoring them, and adjusting them as needed in order to address the needs of all of our students. Essentially, all roads lead back to Tier 1 instruction. Specifically, at Indian Hollow, we are focusing on building teacher capacity and efficacy to use data purposefully, both for Tier 1 instruction and Tier 2 and 3 interventions. The multi-tiered systems of support framework and systems thinking are designed to support both our students and teachers in the journey towards student growth and achievement. Thank you. And now, here's Anne Nguyen.
Good evening. At Bass Hoover, we also use family input and data to determine the best practices for our students. As we standardize these decision-making trees, we are ensuring consistency for our students as they transfer within schools in our county. So, this is very important work, and I think it's going to provide much success for all of us and all of our students going forward. This concludes our presentation for tonight. Should you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Appreciate everyone as part of that presentation there and information with the board here. Opening up for questions to the board. Dr. Angelo is available, and I'm sure others he can call on if they might be better suited to answer. So, questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Atkins.
Mr. Dario talked about a pilot math program, and I was just kind of wondering, can anyone speak to it? You know, what successes have we seen from other school districts? Why was this program chosen? Can you shed a little light on that for us?
Sure. So, it kind of goes along with the reading intervention program we put in place two years ago called corrective reading. We have been getting, like I said, we have gotten really, really good results from that. We are seeing great student progress. Our SOL scores last year came up quite a bit. We, the program that we are implementing in math, we were actually starting it, I believe, on Thursday. It is a very similar program to the corrective reading program. It is a scripted program. Our teachers are familiar with implementing the reading program already, and our students who are in intervention are already familiar with it, the reading part of it. So, by going through forward with the similar program that we are using for math with the similarities, we think hopefully we'll get some of the same results. I also did quite an extensive study on the reading program with my dissertation that I completed a few years ago before I'd come here. And the school I was at previously had excellent results with the reading part, so...
So, you've actually used this math program, though?
I have not actually used the math program. Like I said, that's where we're doing a 14-student pilot, just to see what kind of results we get, how it might work out between now and the end of the year. There is quite a bit of research out there on the program. It's called corrective math, which is similar to corrective reading program. You know, obviously, there's other places where I can get results from it. And like I said, we looked at it because of the similarities between that and corrective reading.
Great. So, yeah, so the teachers should be able to transition from the reading program over to the math program pretty seamlessly.
And some of, like I said, a lot of the students are familiar with the same language of the program, too, so... And like I said, we're starting small, just piloting, seeing what kind of results we get before we go into a larger scale of it, so...
Great deal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. ...
I have a question.
Ms. Martin.
Yes. Is there a particular reason that you discovered why the math was not as productive as it should be?
I'll just stay up here. Like I had mentioned, I think the biggest thing is that we were not, through the pandemic, part of the pandemic, of course, and then we did not have an effective intervention program for math. Right now, for reading, we have, for our students who are not on grade level, they're receiving additional reading intervention every day, 45 minutes a day. So, we have an intensive intervention program for reading. That's why we're seeing the great progress in reading. We do not have that in place at math. We hope to build that into our master schedule next year so that we have an intervention program where students who are not making sufficient progress can do so. The nice thing about the corrective program, Mr. Atkins, that you asked about, is that it focuses on specific topics of math. Might be addition, might be subtraction, might be multiplication, division, and it assesses students who have weaknesses in those areas, and then it allows us to target those specific areas and build up those foundational skills that are missing, so...
Okay, so I guess my question also is like, so why were those foundational things missing besides the pandemic? I mean, because you did have on-screen learning, online learning.
Part of what I mentioned, I mentioned a few moments ago, is that we, as a division, we recognize we need to strengthen our Tier 1 instruction. That's the instruction that happens in every classroom, and the division is working on putting up together some professional development to make sure that all of the different instructional strategies that take place in the classroom for all students are research-based and effective. At this point, we have a lot of new staff. Evendale, over the past three years since I have been there, we've turned over a lot of our staff, and similar to many of our other buildings, and we're just finding that teachers who are coming in fresh into the profession just aren't trained the way many of our veteran teachers are. So, we really want to solidify their instructional strategies and their bag of tools so that when students aren't responding to that Tier 1 instruction, they have some other things that they can do to make sure students aren't falling behind.
Just to add a little bit more information, it's an interesting phenomenon, and we can speculate as to why, but we don't know for sure why. Our data overall, which is not uncommon, at least across the state, and I don't know... Our data overall, which is not uncommon, at least across the state, and I don't know nationally whether this is the case, that our data shows that when we shut down and then when we were the, the A-day, B-day hybrid model during the twenty, I guess it was 2021 school year, coming out of that, our reading data didn't show much impact of that. Our math data showed significant impact of that. And so why math was more impacted than reading, I mean, like I said, we can, we can speculate why that is, but we definitely saw that, are seeing that across the board. So this, this will certainly support. We always pay attention when, when principals find something that will support students and they pilot, we measure the impact of that to see, is that something we want to scale up? So we're paying close attention to how that goes at Evendale.
Other question, Mr. Lake?
Dr. Angelo, when you mention a reading, to get reading up, to scale it up, might be as much as forty-five minutes a day. Who does that?
Who, who performs the intervention?
Yeah.
It varies by school. I mean, they, they provide supports. Typically, we start with a classroom teacher. Some schools have math specialists, some schools have reading specialists, just depends on the, the building, quite honestly, and where they fall. But it, it really varies by building as to who provides that level of support. It's a, typically a licensed teacher or a very well-trained instructional assistant, but typically a licensed teacher.
Is it a classroom setting? Would there be like ten students and a guest?
It varies a little bit. Sometimes it's smaller groups, sometimes it's a class size of ten. Sometimes it's a station within the larger group. It's just very, very much varies based on the needs of the students.
And this is across all six grades of elementaries, right?
Well, every, every school does it, honestly. I mean, it's not just elementary. This, this particular thing that you're looking at here, we have had, as you well know, we've had Virginia-tiered systems of support in place for quite some time. So this is really just coming back to that and honestly, coming back to it with more intentionality, I think, this time than what we had in the past. But this is pervasive through all of our levels. The reset right now, the focus right now is at the elementary level. This will be continuing into the secondary level as well, strengthening.
Further questions for Dr. Angelo or the team? All right, I'll, I've got a few. I'll just ask one here. We talked about kind of the pyramid being upside down. Is that just in math, or is that we're finding across trends?
Yeah, I think, I believe that was the math, is what you found in, in math. Which is, which is why we were looking at that math intervention.
And I'm just a visual person, so when I was teaching, I would use sticky notes to identify students. And so as a teacher, I think seeing those sticky notes reversed in the, the time is a daunting task, so appreciate the efforts on that front. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Angelo. All right, that'll move us to, and thank you so much for presenting as well and the work that you're doing to impact students daily. Bring us to new business, and we do have some reports to share. So Mr. Hester, if you want to take a swig of water?
Yeah.
You've got a few for us here.
Yes, and sit back and kick your feet up. I will need to take a water break at some point. The finance committee met in the, Dr. Melton F. Wright Board Meeting Room at the Frederick County Public Schools Administration Building on February 23rd. The meeting was called to order at four P.M., and a copy of the minutes has been provided to each board member. During the meeting, Mrs. Anderson provided responses to questions submitted by school board members following the finance committee meeting held on February 16th, 2023. Dr. Angelo, instructional staff, and middle and high school administrators reviewed the request for twenty-one new positions, including the superintendent's proposed FY24 budget. Mrs. Camery and Mrs. Anderson reviewed additional information from the superintendent's proposed FY24 budget that included a five percent enhancement to supplemental pay scales, extended contracts, sick leave payment, and tuition assistance for dual enrollment and certifications for maintenance technicians. Mrs. Camery also reminded the committee that the school board is scheduled to adopt the proposed 2024 budget at the March 21st School Board Meeting. The meeting adjourned at 5:15, or I apologize, 5:13 P.M. Additional details regarding information covered at the committee meeting are included in the minutes provided to board members. Are there any questions from board members about the finance committee meeting held on February 23rd? If not, we did have one action item come out of that meeting, which was to recommend approval of the minutes from the finance committee meeting held on February 23rd, 2023.
All right, we'll take that as a motion.
Second.
All right, motion's been properly seconded to approve the finance committee meetings from the event held on February the 23rd. Any discussion? All in favor of approval of the minutes? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes.
Okay, the finance committee met in the Dr. Melton F. Wright Board Meeting Room at the Frederick County Public Schools Administration Building on March 2nd. The meeting was called to order at four P.M., and a copy of the minutes was, has been provided to each board member. During the meeting, Mrs. Anderson provided responses to questions submitted by school board members following the finance committee meeting held on February 23rd, 2023. Mrs. Camery reviewed budget information about WIDA and student growth assessments, student travel, communications, staff recruitment, and the addition of two replacement buses. In addition, Mr. Grubbs discussed the lifespan of a bus. Mrs. Camery reviewed baseline budget adjustments that are a net reduction of 1.6 million dollars. Dr. Hummer reviewed the FY2024 tax rate scenarios by the Frederick County Board of Supervisors. Mr. Christman reviewed the capital project fund. He also reviewed the benefits of the capital asset plan, the process used to prioritize projects, the tools used to help estimate project costs, and the FY24 budget requests preventative maintenance operating fund and asset replacement capital projects fund. Dr. Hummer asked school board members to provide questions relating to the proposed budget prior to March 21st School Board Meeting, where the proposed FY24 budget is scheduled to be adopted. The meeting adjourned at 5:07 P.M. Are there any questions from school board members about information shared at the finance committee meeting held on March 2nd? If not, we did have one action item come out of that. Recommend approval of the minutes from the finance committee meeting held on March 2nd, 2023.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the finance committee meeting minutes from March the 2nd. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of doing so, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries.
The finance committee meeting, committee met in the Dr. Melton F. Wright Board Meeting Room at the Frederick County Public Schools Administration Building on March 9th. The meeting was called to order at four P.M., and a copy of the minutes has been provided to each board member. The agenda was amended to add other funds under new business. During the meeting, Mrs. Anderson provided responses to questions submitted by school board members following the finance committee meeting held on March 2nd, 2023. Mrs. Camery reviewed per pupil expenditures to include calculation and source funds. A per, per, a per pupil comparison by localities was also provided and reviewed. Mrs. Camery reviewed statements regarding S R three funds being spent on the old Robert E. Ailer Middle School, and that S R three funds are being used for the Armel Elementary HVAC replacement and learning loss. She also clarified the process in which S R three funds are approved and used. In addition, she stated that Frederick County Public Schools passed a state audit regarding the use of the funds. Mrs. Camery discussed enrollment versus expenses in the debt service fund. She also reviewed current health insurance premium shares, health insurance funds, and a ten percent insurance premium increase for employees. Mrs. Anderson reviewed all other funds to include school nutrition, school textbook, in rep operating and textbook, consolidated services, and private purpose. Dr. Hummer reviewed adjustments to the proposed FY24 bu, budget based upon the Frederick County Board of Supervisors funding scenarios. Dr. Hummer also noted FCPS may need to alter their school board meeting schedule should budget adjustments be required after the Board of Supervisors vote on their budget on April 19th. Mr. Hester and Dr. Hummer asked school board members to provide questions relating to the proposed budget prior to the March 21st School Board Meeting, where the proposed FY24 budget is scheduled to be adopted. The meeting adjourned at 4:58 P.M. Are there any questions from board members about information shared at the finance committee meeting held on March 9th? If not, we had one action item come out of the meeting. Recommend approval of the minutes from the finance committee meeting held on March 9th, 2023.
Second.
We have motions made properly seconded to approve the minutes of the finance committee meeting held on March the 9th. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. The finance committee meeting met, met in the Dr. Melton F. Wright Board Meeting Room at the Frederick County Public Schools Administration Building on March 16th. The meeting was called to order at four P.M., and a copy of the minutes have been provided to each board member. The agenda was amended to add Sherrando High School modulars under new business. During the meeting, Mrs. Camery reviewed a recommendation to award a contract valued at 5,145,000 to Param, pardon me, Paramount Mechanical Corporation for the Armel Elementary School HVAC replacement. Mrs. Camery reviewed upcoming important dates, meeting dates, and Mrs. Anderson provided responses to questions submitted by school board members following the finance committee meeting held on March 9th, 2023. Mrs. Camery reviewed the proposed budget of 9.2 million and the tax scenarios advertised by the Frederick County Board of Supervisors. Committee, committee members discussed the superintendent's proposed budget and shared their perspectives of the proposal. Dr. Hummer and Dr. Abbey shared with the committee a request for modulars at Sherrando High School due to issues with capacity. Dr. Abbey further discussed the timeline and budget for the project. In addition, committee members and staff discussed the need and financial concerns regarding the request. The meeting adjourned at 5:17 P.M. Are there any questions from board members about the information shared at the finance committee meeting held on March 16th? With that, we did have several action items come out of this. First was to recommend the full board award a contract valued at 5,145,000 to Paramount Mechanical Corporation as a result of IFB 23017, Armel Elementary School HVAC replacement.
Second.
All right, we have a motion that's been put forward and seconded to award the contract valued at 5.145 million to Paramount Mechanical Corporation for the Armel Elementary School HVAC replacement. Any discussion? All right, due to the financial nature of it, we'll do a roll call vote.
You ready?
We are.
Mr. Lake?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Aye.
Mr. Comstock?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes. All right, that motion carries.
Okay. The second one is recommend the full board adopt the proposed FY24 budget. So, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the superintendent's proposed budget for FY2023, 2024 as a school board's FY2023 and 2024 proposed budget.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion has been made and properly seconded. Is there any discussion?
I'd like to make an amendment to adopting the budget.
Okay, we, sure.
That we increase the classified staff to seventeen an hour from fifteen an hour.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to increase classified, keep the remainder of the budget the same, keep the remaining of the budget the same, increase classified staff to a minimum of seventeen dollars an hour.
That's correct.
Okay. All right, a motion has been made and properly seconded to increase, to amend the, the budget to increase classified staff to seventeen dollars an hour. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman? Can we get a dollar figure?
Sure.
Yes.
We can.
So it's going to be roughly 5 million dollars to increase from fifteen dollars to seventeen dollars an hour.
So nine-two to fourteen?
Yes, sir.
All right, further discussion around the amendment itself.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Comstock?
I appreciate the motion and the sentiment behind that, and I think that we need to find ways to work towards higher salaries for all of our staff. I think that with what we're sending downtown right now and requesting, I think it's a really big ask, and it's more than has been advertised, is my understanding, by the county. So while I agree, big picture, that that's something we should work toward, and I would love to see that, I think that a good first step, the, the current budget that we have, increases to a fifteen dollar per hour base, and I think that's a good first step. And then we should do some of the long-term planning that we've been talking about, where, where we would like to see all of the different pay scales and our staffing ratios and all of those things ahead, and really plan that out in a purposeful and meaningful way, including downtown in those conversations, rather than, than doing it with, with a request like this right before we're sending it downtown. So I do agree with the sentiment. I think that it's something that's very important. I just think that we have to plan it out a little bit different before we send it down there.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Atkins?
I would like to disagree with the vice chair's comments. We are in a classified staff shortage. We need bus drivers, we need aides, we need those people who are greasing the wheels of education out here. And to keep and retain those people, we got to be competitive. We got to be competitive with sheets. We've got to be competitive with McDonald's. We've got to be competitive to get those kids to school. You know, I'm not in a shortage for administrators. I'm in a shortage for, you know, all my classified staff right now. So, yep, whatever we got to do to get that seventeen dollars an hour, I'd like to get that done.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. White?
In one of our finance meetings, I, I've, the date leaves me, but our HR department told us that our greatest need was for classified staff, and that includes bus drivers, instructional aides, food, food service professionals. So I think that this is absolutely a necessity. We need to be competitive, and we need to start now.
Mr. Hester?
Yeah, I've got some words. You know, we did have some good discussion at the finance committee meeting, and I'm going to piggyback off of what Mr. Comstock said. You know, unfortunately, you know, well, not unfortunately, but we are working towards the overall picture. We are making a jump this year. And unfortunately, you know, our staff has talked with downtown, and it sort of seems to be a hu, a huge hurdle, and we caused some issues because the, our, the rate in the budget, you know, our budget's already been sort of advertised from downtown. You know, as Mr. Comstock said, the overall big picture, we need to look at, you know, increasing everybody. And we are working towards that. We've made some great jumps this year with this budget. If we were to get every dollar requested in this budget, it would make huge strides across the school district. And it's just a very big ask. We've made some great strides with communication downtown. Dr. Hummer's done a great job with meeting and, you know, with the finance committee meeting down there. And, you know, just adding 5 million dollars, you know, to our 9.2 million dollar budget would just be a huge ask in this current timeframe.
Additional comments from board members?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Atkins?
I'd rather the people downtown tell us no than this board tell our classified staff no.
All right, other comments from board members?
Five million dollars in the scheme of things doesn't seem to be paramount. And, and I agree with Mr. Atkins, I'd rather for the Board of Supervisors say no than, than we, because you've got bus drivers, you've got you've got the cafeteria help, maintenance people that we need desperately to have, to support. This is where we're having weakness right now, and we need those people to help us.
Yes, sir. Can we ask Mrs. Camery what the exact dollar amount? I don't have that in front of me. If we were to increase, was it a straight $5 million? Straight five?
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Comstock?
Dr. Hummer, I believe, and I don't know if you or Mrs. Camery could expand on this, but I believe, if I recall, if memory serves me, the reason why it was such a large dollar figure is because increasing that rate would, would impact other pay scales, and it would, it would cause us to have to raise other pay scales so that...
It was a true increase, correct?
Okay, thank you.
Sure, I'll share, agree with some of the sentiment on both sides of the conversation. Firm believer, and I think each board member that I've had conversations with, which has been everyone, can attest of my desire to see specific classified roles enhanced, because those are the roles that we are really struggling with and are impacting the day-to-day of the school division. I don't know that this is the correct way to approach that, is kind of a one-size-fits-all approach, and so that one formed my vote. Further discussion from the board? Mr. Lake?
Yeah, so we have a, just so everybody knows, we have a proposal in front of us for the 9.2 that everybody has heard about, and it's probably, I'm going to say 20, maybe 25 line items of various positions and needs, and that makes up the 9.2, and the 9.2 has been advertised by the county. And so, the scenarios that the county is currently considering, the best-case scenario doesn't give us that ability. So, what it comes down to is, these line items that's on this list here, it's a prioritization of all of this, the classified staff. How critical are they? They absolutely are critical. If the bus driver doesn't show up, the kid's not going to school, you don't need the teacher, you don't need the building. That's just, that's just the straight skinny of it. And so, when you take this list that we have here in front of us, is there $5 million to increase classified staff? Yeah, but at the cost of behavioral specialist, administrative, SE supervisors and coordinators, curricular activities, enhanced behavioral specialist pay, technicians, parent liaison, the list goes on and on. There's 25 of these, and they all have a price tag to them. And so, what it will come down to, and what's going to happen, is in April, we're going to get a dollar figure, one of those scenarios that you've seen in the paper, and that's going to come back to us. We're going to get this list out, and then we're going to see what it is can be funded and can go forward. But really, in the end, it's a list of priorities. What are your priorities? What is the most important? And unfortunately, the only person that knows that is Dr. Hummer and his staff. They run the school division. They operate the school division. They know what it takes to make this place go, and while everyone, everyone would like to see across-the-board increases, we want to see our staff stay here, we want to see our staff want to stay here, but against other priorities, where does that fall? And so, that's what will be going forward, and that's what we'll find out. But the 9.2 is, it was in the paper, that's what that will be, and in the very, very best-case scenario to get that, well, you saw that it didn't fall in any of those three scenarios, and so, that's, Mr. Chairman, that's my take on kind of where it falls.
Further discussion from the board on the amendment to the motion. All right, we'll proceed with a roll call vote on the amendment itself, which is to change classified staff to $17.
Mr. Lake?
No.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Aye.
Mr. Comstock?
No.
Mr. Hester?
No.
Ms. Martin?
No.
And Mr. Monk?
No.
All right, the amendment fails. Before us, we have the motion as presented from Mr. Hester. Are there additional amendments or discussion from the board on the motion? All right, I'll put forward an amendment as well, and I think I've talked with almost every board member about some of my thoughts around the budget, and appreciate the work that Dr. Hummer, Dr. Lamanna, staff, and others have done on the budget. But two, Mrs. White feel as if classified staff and staff and retention are a high priority for us, and so, I've tried to think about ways in which our return on investment can be greater when we think about a percentage pay increase. Each cost us, a couple of years ago was a million, I think it's greater than that now just for a 1% increase, and for some of those classified staff, a 1% increase, although it's helpful, is not as meaningful in terms of their day-to-day impact of budgeting. So, I would propose an amendment to the motion that would remove the athletic, middle school athletic trainers, the additional behavior specialists and behavior technicians, and the pay, I'll make sure I've got the pay, additional pay scale adjustment for behavior technicians out of the budget, and replace it with a program, basic rec program for our staff, which would allow classified staff members to have before and after care for students. I think the ROI on that would be beneficial, a CTA liaison, and a social worker. And so, I do so move. Is there a second?
A second.
Second.
All right, motion has been made and properly seconded to remove the athletic trainer, the behavior specialist, behavior technicians, and the pay enhancement for the behavior specialist, and replace it with a basic rec program for staff, a CTA liaison, and a social worker. Any discussion on the amendment? Mr. Atkins?
Mr. Chairman, where would that social worker go?
Sure, I'm happy to answer, and Dr. Hummer could answer as well. Right now, it's my understanding that the division has one social worker that is employed by the division. We do have some contracted folks using ESR dollars, but the intent behind the amendments or the proposal would be to kind of get ahead of some of the behavior challenges that our division is experiencing on a more root level. So, I believe that social worker would be spread across the division, is my understanding. Dr. Hummer?
I'm going to see, Mr. Atkins, do you have another question?
Yep, but so, Dr. Hummer, that social worker, not the behavior specialist, but that social worker, their scope of work would be focusing on behavioral issues, or would they be, you know, helping out with, you know, special needs? What, like, what else would they be doing? Or they, they kind of, you know, more specific to one area?
Great question. So, all the above. So, our social workers are considered mental health professionals. They would be providing an additional layer of support of connecting families to community resources, which is something that we would definitely want to make sure that we are connecting in regards to some other type of supports that families might need out in the community. One of my goals that I've been talking through with each of you is definitely expanding that more than just one in the future, and I'm going to be looking into, I'm having a phased-in approach for FY 25. It's something I'm looking at, because we currently only have one social worker for the entire school division with the two, as Mr. Monk just mentioned, through ESR funds, which will eventually go away. So, the whole purpose of a social worker is to provide that level of support and layer of support for the entire school and the community, but also to provide more of those proactive measures to make sure that we have those services and supports implemented, as well as training the necessary staff with the implementation of supports.
Thank you, Dr. Hummer. Thank you, Mr. Atkins. Mr. Lake?
Yeah, interesting concept. So, since you've been working on this, is this a dollar-per-dollar? You took out four, five, you added five, or is this a dollar-for-dollar?
So, I don't believe it's exactly dollar-for-dollar. I think it's pretty close. Dr. Hummer communicated earlier. Do you have a specific breakdown of what that might look like?
Yeah, it definitely doesn't go over the 9.2. So, these items were presented, and based on the calculations, it would be under, under that 9.2, but it would be a trade for each of those items.
Well, I'll just, I'll just tell you, my, my initial reaction is, it sounds interesting, but I sure would have rather had this discussion in a Finance Committee meeting, where we could lay out the particulars of each, and then sort of get a feel from staff about their feeling on priority of this, or, you know, the stuff I just talked about before, about where's it falling in the scheme of things. I think here tonight, as an amendment to the motion, I can't, I probably can't support it, but that's one vote, so.
Appreciate that. I will just share, I did communicate with members of the Finance Committee, provided questions, and so, they had the opportunity, if they wanted to, to discuss, but don't serve on the Finance Committee myself. Further, Mr. Comstock?
I don't know if this would be a point of order. I'm not sure. Question. I have a question. The budget we put forward is for a dollar monetary amount. Right now, what's proposed is the 9.2 million. Say, and say the county funds our request, the 9.2 million, does it still come back to us to, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have looked at Mrs. Camery. Dr. Hummer, does it still come back to this board to finalize? I know, for example, there were some different options with pay scales, and we have ideas like this. Does it still, no matter what, if they just fund what we've asked for, would it still come back to this board to finalize prior to?
Absolutely, and that's a really good question, Mr. Comstock. So, right now, on the floor for a motion is the 9.2 million. Once the Board of Supervisors appropriates the funds based on whatever tax rate is approved, it would then come back to us through a Finance and Budget Committee meeting, and then back to a board meeting for us to discuss what options we would like to see adjusted, what items we would like to see traded out. So, the 9.2, if you vote on that tonight, does not lock in all of the line items that are on to that budget. It's just the 9.2, which would be locked in, everything else we can discuss up until you vote on it in April.
Thank you for that. Mr. Chairman, if I may, excuse me, I think that there are some really good ideas here. I like the idea of trying to find ways to provide more benefit to our staff, to retain them here. I like the idea of the CTA liaison, and I like the idea of adding to our repertoire of social workers. We need more of those. There are a lot of needs, and I think my concern with going and chopping up and trying to add or take from right now is we don't know yet what downtown is going to do, so I would be more inclined to just send forward the 9.2 million that we've asked for and see what they do, and then take a look at, I know there were a lot of questions, and this kind of addresses Mr. Lake, a lot of these questions were asked in finance and are in the minutes, the dollar amount and the purpose of these positions. So, I think that, you know, there may be some merit to some of these things, but right now, as it stands, I don't see the benefit of adding and taking and trying to amend this to add or subtract specific positions. I'd rather send it all downtown, and let's see what we get from them, and then revisit this and fine-tune everything at that point. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Mr. Comstock?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. White?
I agree with your sentiment, Bradley, in some respect, and I also agree with yours, Mr. Monk. I think we're a county of halves. I think that we're growing. I think that we have the funds, and we have the ability to pay for the addition to the classified staff and the basic rec program that Mr. Monk proposed, and a social worker. These are all necessities. I think that we have the ability to do it all, and I think we should ask for it, but I think the best course of action with the motion failing and what we have in front of us now is to proceed with the proposed budget and go from there. I think unfortunately, regardless of our wants and our needs, we are going to be facing some tough decisions, and we'll have to take them in stride.
Thank you. Further comment from board members? Appreciate Mrs. White and Mr. Comstock, the sentiment there, and thoughts behind the ideas, and being, and being open to listening to some of those. I think my thought behind bringing it tonight is that, yes, we are providing a proposed budget that would be then the school board's proposed budget, then it would come back to this board, determining upon the financial allocation from the local level to make adjustments as needed. I think one of the things that has been discussed as a community is, some, right or wrong, feel as if the school board gets an allocation and then changes up how that allocation is utilized. And so, from my perspective, sharing with the Board of Supervisors our intent this evening, before they receive it, would be the most prudent way to move forward, but appreciate your thoughts as well. Additional comments from board members? All right, regarding the, the kind of adjustments as well, and I've talked about this a little bit, I think that basic rec program, although I'm not for providing free everything, I think that benefit, if we look at an ROI from a salary perspective, could really potentially impact in a positive way some of our classified staff and really support them in a great way, and we see other school divisions, not only throughout our Commonwealth, but throughout the country, doing something similar. It helps with retention, but also recruitment, and so, think that could be a big win for us, that CTA liaison. I hear consistently from small business owners and community leaders that having that connection to the school is vitally important to take our students from the classroom to the workplace, and then that social worker, I think, getting ahead of some of those challenges that we have with students, and also connecting them with the community supports that they and their family need are important. So, that's why I put forward the motion, think it would greatly impact our school division in a positive way. If there's no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote as well, oh, sorry.
Can we just, exactly what are we voting on? Your changes, right?
Yep, so, the amendment, thank you, Mr. Lake, we'd be voting on the amendment itself, which would be to remove the athletic trainer positions, the behavior specialist, behavior technician, and the pay enhancement scale, so that's $693,500 or so there, and adding in roughly a $500,000 basic rec program, a $77,000 CTA liaison, and an $84.7,000 social worker for roughly $661,000, so, almost dollar-for-dollar. So, this vote is on the amendment itself. Mrs. White?
Would this call for a division of the question? For it to be divided for the removal of the positions that you just stated, and then voting on replacing them with the others?
So, if you'd like to divide the amendment, you could. You would need to have a motion to divide it, and then there would need to be a second. We would need to approve dividing it, and then we would vote on them separately, if that's what you wanted. My motion would be having them together.
Okay.
Not divided. Did you want to divide, or?
No, I think we can proceed.
Okay.
Mr. Lake?
No.
Ms. White?
No.
Mr. Atkins?
Aye.
Mr. Comstock?
No.
Mr. Hester?
No.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
And Mr. Monk?
Yes.
All right, the motion fails, so before us, we have the original motion that Mr. Hester put on the table to move forward with the superintendent's budget as presented. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Comstock?
Apologize for your failed motion. What I'd like to say to the public, and if anyone downtown is listening, is our needs are great. Our needs are greater than what is in the current budget. Our needs are greater than the $9.2 million we're requesting, and I think we could, each of us, come up with a similar list of positions that would benefit our division and our, ultimately, our students. The needs are great, and I just hope, the sentiment that I would like downtown to hear, I just hope that you would take some time to watch some of those meetings and look at the minutes, and look at everything we've done to really, as a board, understand the needs, and trust that what we're asking for is not just kind of some magic number out of the air, like, these are all real positions, and we could ask for more. There's a lot more that we actually need. There's a lot more that we actually need. But anyways, just wanted to pass that sentiment along. So, thanks for everyone's time, staff's time, and the board's time in learning what those needs are, and in trying to prioritize those. And I know we're going to have more work to do in that effort, when we do have to prioritize that, and figure out exactly which of these things we can and cannot afford.
Thank you, Mr. Comstock. Mr. Hester.
And I'd like to say thank you publicly to the finance committee, to the, you know, finance department for all the work that's been done going into this. This is not something that's just thrown together overnight. It's a nine, 10, 11-month process. I mean, literally, after the budget season of this year, the finance department starts on next year. So, it's not something that we take lightheartedly. And, you know, there's a process that the school division goes through, starting at the school level, and feeding its way up to prioritize what's in front of us tonight. So, I just want to thank, you know, again, finance department, but also all the staff, you know, at the school division level that's put in their work to make this budget where it is today. So, thank you.
All right. Additional comments from board members or amendments? All right. I'll just share, and I appreciate Mr. Comstock and Mr. Hester, your sentiment. And I've heard your thought about going down with a number. To me, that does seem like we're just shooting in the wind, if we're going to potentially change it, once we, if we were to get those dollars. And so, would disagree with that sentiment. But when I am in schools, or chatting with staff, or teachers, or parents, or even students themselves, what I hear about are the needs of, whether it be their pay, whether it be the benefits that they have, whether it be student discipline and behavior, whether it be the support that they have in the classroom, or lack thereof, whether it be administration support, and how great their administrator is, or how they wish they might act in a different way. And so, these were things that were brought forward in our October meeting that I know were of interest. But what I don't hear from those individuals is that, hey, man, we really need an athletic trainer for a middle school. And so, it concerns me that that is listed as one of our high priorities in our division, when I think everyone on this dais recognizes that our division has needs, and they are great, and we maybe disagree on what those are. So, with that, I cannot in good conscience support a budget that places something like a middle school athletic trainer before some of those other pressing needs of school bus drivers and classified staff. So, I will not be supporting the budget. Any further discussion? All right, let's have a roll call vote. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Lake?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Comstock?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
And Mr. Monk?
No. All right. Motion carries, and we have a budget. Mr. Hester.
Yes, for, it was so long ago, I forgot. We had two other action items that came out of the March 16th committee, finance committee. Third was recommend the full board proceed with the two new units, four classrooms of modulators at Shorando High School.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, I'll share, and I know I've talked with Dr. Hummer about this, and kind of the timing of things worked out. Had wished this had come before building and grounds a little bit, but for the community's understanding, this was a budget item that was below a, or not a budget item, an item that was below a threshold, that's within our policy, that soon went above that threshold, so the board was made aware of it through the finance committee. And so, have some concerns about how all of that happened, that we could maybe address later in a committee setting, but support the modulators for Shorando High School. So, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, we'll proceed to vote on this, because it is finance-related, in a roll call vote. Mr. Lake is ready.
Mr. Lake?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Comstock?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes. All right, motion carries.
Okay, last but not least, recommend approval of the minutes from the finance committee meeting held on March 16th, 2023.
Second.
All right, a motion that has been made and properly seconded to approve the finance committee meeting minutes from their March 16th meeting. Any discussion? All in favor of approval of the minutes, sign if you're saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, minutes are approved. All right, that leads us to Building and Grounds Committee Report. Mr. Comstock.
Mr. Chairman, the Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting met at the Dr. Melton F. Wright Board Meeting Room in the Frederick County Public Schools Administration Building on March 14th. The meeting was called to order at 4:00 PM, and a copy of the minutes has been provided to each board member. During the meeting, Dr. Hummer shared the capital projects list, shared that the capital projects list will be included as a standing agenda item under unfinished business. He will also be providing regular updates about construction projects. Mr. Crispin reviewed the status of the capital projects list to include projects funded by SRR2 and SRR3 funds. Dr. Hummer reviewed capacity concerns at Jordan Springs Elementary School. He also shared information regarding the committee's request to provide information about the cost and a timeline for a comprehensive rezoning. He also stated that the current elementary school capacity is at 95.6%, and that a comprehensive rezoning may not provide relief to overcrowding. Mr. Matthew Cropper of Cropper GIS Consulting provided information about a comprehensive rezoning study, and suggested a truncated version of the rezoning study would be more cost-effective and could be accomplished in less time. Dr. Hummer shared the long-term way to address overcrowding at Jordan Springs Elementary School. He reviewed current enrollment, enrollment projections, and current classroom sizes in relation to the Virginia Department of Education's standards of quality. Dr. Hummer also reviewed the three short-term options to address overcrowding at Jordan Springs Elementary School. The pros and cons of the alternative options, and the option of splitting preschool through second grade, and grades three through five between Jordan Springs and Stonewall Elementary Schools were also discussed. He also shared the deadline to make a decision regarding the modulators is March 31st. Dr. Hummer recommended Shorando High School Agriculture Department be named after Shorando High School's principal, John Nelson. Committee members and staff further discussed the rezoning study and options to address overcrowding at Jordan Springs Elementary School, as well as all schools in the division due to growth within Frederick County. Committee members and staff commented on the need to have joint meetings between Frederick County Public Schools Buildings and Grounds Committee and the equivalent committee of the Frederick County Board of Supervisors. The meeting adjourned at 5:57 PM. Additional details regarding the committee meeting are included in the minutes provided to board members. Do board members have any questions about what was covered at the Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting held on March 14th?
Mr. Comstock, what's truncated? Find that.
Mr. Chairman, would you like, or should I?
Hey, you go ahead, and I'll.
Fill in the gaps.
I'm interested to hear the definition as well, Mr. Comstock.
So, there was a proposed timeline for what a full-scale comprehensive rezoning would look like. Mr. Cropper's initial kind of overall look at it was that this may or may not be beneficial. So, rather than doing the elongated comprehensive version, which includes parent groups, stakeholders, community meetings, all of those components, his first look at it could just be coming up with different scenarios to present to us as a board, which would be the truncated version without the public engagement, to see, is this something that could provide relief? And if so, then we could decide at that time, do we want to proceed with a full-scale rezoning? Or eliminate that as an option, if we see that it's not going to actually provide the benefit that we, as a board, are hoping it will.
Targeting that?
Not just that. The entire, like, looking at a rezoning for the entire division. At the same time, and I don't see this in the minutes, but at the same time, there was discussion about a targeted rezoning at Jordan Springs Elementary, to see if we could provide any relief there. But this board had previously made a motion and proceeded with that to do a, to begin the steps of a full-scale comprehensive elementary school rezoning. And so, this is just. Yep.
If I may, Mr. Comstock, and Dr. Hummer coined the term truncated, so that's where that term came from. But this would allow us to move in a more expeditious way to better understand some of the data behind it, without the, kind of the public input. Then if that data showed that there might be some change, then we would potentially move forward with the public input to see thoughts on what the data showed.
Okay. Thanks.
All right.
That was about a, probably a two-to-three-month process, and it would save us about three-quarters of the cost, if I recall correctly.
That is correct. I'm going to call on Mr. Lee. I know you were waiting to hear back from Mr. Cropper. I don't know if he came back with a price total. If you know, you come on up. If not, we can just wait. Okay, so, yeah, Mr. Lee said we don't have that just yet. But it will be less than the original proposed cost, yes.
Okay. All right, Mr. Comstock.
There are a few motions coming out of the Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting. Mr. Chairman, the committee would recommend renaming the Shorando High School Agricultural Department after Shorando High School Principal, John Nelson.
Second.
All right, a motion has been made and properly seconded to rename the Shorando High School Agricultural Department after Shorando High School Principal, John Nelson. Any discussion? I will just share that, as a former high school agriculture teacher himself, Mr. Nelson has been supportive of agricultural education throughout his career. And I know the high school ag ed teachers there are appreciative of the work he's done outside of his capacity as an ag teacher, and now as an administrator, that goes seen and unseen. So, fully support Mr. Nelson in this endeavor. All right, all in favor of doing so, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, that was a good one. All opposed? No, motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Nelson.
Mr. Chairman, the committee would recommend moving forward with a truncated rezoning study of all school levels to include a focus on Jordan Springs Elementary School.
Second.
All right, motion has been made and properly seconded to move forward with a truncated rezoning study of all school levels to include a focus on Jordan Springs Elementary School. It has been made and properly seconded. As Mr. Comstock shared, this is a little bit different than we had discussed at our last meeting, and he elaborated on the rationale for that. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, the committee would like to recommend the consideration of only two options regarding Jordan Springs. So, the committee wants to bring this back to the full board. Regarding the Jordan Springs Elementary School capacity issue, options would be either the addition of modulators or alternate room assignments, and the school, and that doesn't really take any action from the board, but that would just be the school kind of figuring out the space right now, using what they have. So, those are the two options. The other options, I'm sorry, this is supposed to be a motion, not an explanation, so.
No, let's, if there's.
I didn't understand both options.
If there's unanimous, we could send Mr. Comstock. We'll share kind of a briefing of the options there. Is that okay? All right, Mr. Comstock.
So, there were other options that were discussed. Yes, ma'am. So, and then there were other options discussed at the Buildings and Grounds Committee that the committee decided were not best. One of those included splitting up the school, and having like pre-K through two, go to one school, and then three through five at a different school. So, we, there were different options that were discussed. The two that the committee wanted to send back for this board to discuss and decide between were, are we going to add the modulators or not? And if this board decides to not move forward with adding the modulators, what that would do is it would leave Jordan Springs in a position where they just kind of have to figure it out, using space. And Mr. Raymond came and explained, he shared a map of the school and the rooms that are available, that are not ideal as classrooms. So, really, the only two options this committee felt comfortable with are either us adding modulators, or just kind of rolling the dice and letting them, letting them see how it goes with numbers in terms of utilizing the space that they have.
What was the first one?
Adding modular classrooms to the outside of Jordan Springs.
You said something about dividing.
And that was eliminated.
That wasn't an option.
Correct, yes, ma'am.
Dividing up the, and doing what with them?
It doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter? So, aren't you dividing them by putting out the modulators?
It would be adding classrooms where there could be classes at Jordan Springs. So, it would allow.
On the property, but you're still, there's still division.
Yes, ma'am.
So, and just to be clear, and serve on the Building and Grounds Committee, and agree with moving forward with the two options, but the board would have the prerogative if they saw that the other options were necessary to do one of those as well, if it was the pleasure of the majority of the board. But the committee itself recommended that we move forward only with considering these two options. Mr. or Dr. Hummer, I know one of the topics of our conversation at last meeting was a motion brought forward about potentially transitioning a grade, and moving them to Stonewall Elementary. Could you provide some insight as to why that would, or wouldn't work, from a staff perspective, in addition, in addition to what we've had at the Building and Grounds?
Sure, sure. Although, we definitely appreciate the recommendations that have been brought forth by the school board in regards to thinking of other options, and I think we've definitely exhausted those. And to go back to Mrs. Martin's question about splitting the pre-K two and the three-five, I think there's also some concerns with that as well. But in regards to the fifth grade, there's a couple concerns after talking with staff, and really thinking through that recommendation for consideration. The first is transportation. So, right now, all of our fifth-grade students aren't in one location in that particular division in Jordan Springs. So, the transportation of getting to each of those students is going to make it very difficult, and it probably would add some additional routes, and some additional conflicts there. I think another piece, too, is this is a very timely time for transition. So, if we have students transition to another building for fifth grade, and then another building for sixth grade, I think that will be very significant in regards to some of our students that have difficulty transitioning just in their building, let alone to another building, and then transition again. I think that's something we definitely want to take into consideration, especially for this age. Going from elementary to middle school is a very, very difficult transition for students, for all students, just a lot to get used to, a lot of changes. We just want to make sure we take that into account. The other one is extenuating circumstances. So, the first one that really comes to mind is siblings. So, if you're with your siblings, now, yes, when you go to middle school, and you have your siblings that are staying behind, sure. But if you still have that additional year of being with your siblings, that is something that you're going to be splitting family. So, not only for the siblings, but then for the parents as well, where they might have to drive to Stonewall, then to Jordan Springs, or vice versa. So, it will be an additional burden for those students as well. And then also the timing. And I think with Mr. Raymond and Mrs. Wiesbrod, I think they would definitely agree with the sentiment that we want to give their community enough time to process this and work through this, because this would be a huge shift for these families, for something for them to get used to, in addition to space and other aspects. But again, appreciate the thought, and appreciate the recommendation for consideration. But just those were some of the things that we thought about and talked through with our staff.
Thank you, Dr. Hummer. I just wanted to share that with context, and at our last meeting, we discussed it. And if folks hadn't seen the Building and Grounds, they may not have been aware that that was one of the options that we discussed.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Comstock.
I thought of a question, given the Shorando situation, Dr. Hummer, because that process started in 2021, and then we ran into issues with permitting, and then we ran into issues with the bus loops. So, we ran into issues that, while we had a target date, staff, I suppose, had a target date for what that should have looked like to provide that relief at Shorando. And I know we've been given this kind of deadline of March 31st to make this decision. Maybe Mr. Kenny would know, but would we run in, or is there the possibility that we would run into similar issues with permitting, with bus loops, with things like that, that even though we've adhered to a deadline, that those would not be ready by the start of the school year?
Yeah, great question, Mr. Comstock. I'll start this off, and if Mr. Kenny or Mr. Crispin wants to come up and share additional items here. But the first is, unfortunately, I can't speak to all those aspects of what happened before, and thank you, Mr. Monk, for acknowledging when I brought that forward. for acknowledging me when I brought that forward. So thank you for that. Hopefully, there won't be any issues there. We definitely had that timeline of March 31st to get these ordered and installed. And then we just, we try to plan ahead as much as we can in regards to any sort of conflicts that might come up. We're hoping that there won't be any conflicts with this, because there is definitely a need area here. But as far as I know, that there shouldn't be any delays unless there's any delays with the building of trailers. I'm kind of looking at Mr. Kenny or Mr. Crispin. But there's definitely some things that are going to be out of our control, especially if it's not on our end, if they're waiting for stuff to be built or materials. But I don't think there will be any issues, Mr. Kenny or Mr. Crispin. I don't know if you wanted to chime in on that. And if you don't mind coming up to the podium if you had something to say, because people wouldn't be able to hear you from home. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I'm Kevin Kenny, Supervisor of Construction. And Mr. Crispin's back here. He handles a lot more than modulators. What I will say is, there'll be no delay with getting the modulators here. Now, what we have not even did is put pen to paper for our site plan revision, or any of those type of issues there. And then the Building Department. So once you order these modular classroom trailers, you have to have foundation plans, have to be stamped drawings, things like that. We have not even started that process yet. So I'll just caution you that we're holding to the Building Department, their planning review process with planning and zoning, and then also with the Building Department itself cooking those out. Now, we could have the trailer setting here come June 1 and not have those permits in place that would delay us from moving forward with it. So those things, the administrative part of it there is something that would have to be addressed. So when we're saying the March 31st date, that's the date of ordering, actually ordering the modular trailers, but nothing else that's been done. We just got everything lined up, ready to go. So.
Tim, you need to add anything else to that?
We've done all the weekend in preparation for this.
Mr. Crispin, I know everyone here can hear you, but those online, if there are any-
No problem. Tim Crispin, Director of Facilities. My staff was directed to do all they can to prepare for this, so that we can get the ball rolling as quickly as possible. But I think Mr. Kenny's right, there are some unknowns out there.
Okay. And Dr. Hummer, if I'm not mistaken, that's what was explained, was a lot of the holdup at the Shorando project. First, it was permitting, and then it was, they wanted a bus loop, or a fire lane, I'm sorry, not a bus loop, they wanted a fire lane. And so, and that's been a year and a half in the works, just to get that piece taken care of? Is that correct?
Right, that's correct.
Mr. Lake.
Don't go away. Dr. Hummer?
Yes, sir.
So recently, over, well, not very recently, just for a while now, we've heard nothing about, nothing but construction delays, about putting things out to bid, waiting for someone to, and then waiting until they start, and then whatever. Realize that with a modular, this is not a huge construction thing, but you're talking about, you know, concrete footers and electrical and all of that. So any magic wand prediction that we can accomplish this during the summer?
Great question. And I think there are some pieces that we'll definitely have to work through. Mr. Crispin or Mr. Kenny, I don't know if you have any projections there.
There is no magic wands. Sorry, we're all out of those. But I think that Tim's group and mine, the same way, the electrical portion of it is the biggest challenge right now with electrical panels, breakers, you name it, that's the biggest thing. That could hit us. The only way we're getting through it now is our contractors are all playing expedited. They're using every magic wand that they can to pull off, even my two projects. And then with Tim, the same thing. I think you're hitting the same things that I am. It's just not a very good construction environment out there right now, very challenging things like that. We think we try to get all of our bases covered. We try to provide everybody the best information we can. But there's just some definite unknowns. And this is a bit very, very, very tight window to pull this off. It would have to, everything would have to fall into place.
Well, I guess, I guess, you know, thinking about it, I guess, you know, if it's not ready on day one, that's probably okay. You know, mid-October, I mean, you know, our principal could, he just has to, sometimes principals just do what they have to do.
We, from a facility standpoint, we don't want this to be delayed at all. We want it done when school opens up. There's no benefit to anybody for it to extend beyond that. But we, recognizing that we have had some issues, particularly with the school board office modulators, and the ones we have at Ailer right now with electrical parts. So that could happen. That's not what we want to see. And certainly, we would make every effort to get that up and running before the school starts.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may. So Mr. Kenny and Mr. Crispin are definitely answering this question appropriately, because we don't want to sit here and say, yep, it's going to be here August 1, and then there's any sort of delay. We want to be open and upfront in regards to, and thank you, Mr. Lake, for sharing that sentiment, is, construction is, it works by, you know, on its own. It marches to the beat of its own drum. So we want to make sure that we do everything that we can on our end. But what I would like to add is a huge shout out to our principals, because they are, and I shared this in our Buildings and Grounds Committee, is they are magicians when it comes to this. Now, can Mr. Raymond make this work? Yes. Is this a long-term fix? No. But if there is some sort of timeline that we can take a look at and commit to, yes, in the first half of this year, that is something that we want to look forward to. Any sort of long-term fix, I think that will be something that we want to make sure that we take into consideration for providing a conducive learning environment for our students.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Hummer, Mr. Crispin, Mr. Kenny. Additional thoughts, comments from board members?
I've got a couple.
Mr. Hester.
I was able to go out to Jordan Springs and meet with Mr. Raymond. And he really laid out, you know, what the need is. We've got teachers coming into that school next year that we don't have a place for them right now. And it's one of these things where this is not the long-term solution, but it's something we need to consider now. That school, the way that school was built, does not have the free space that some of our other schools, you know, have. And so it would make it very difficult and impede on our, for instance, our special education classrooms there possibly. And that's just not conducive. So I am in favor of the modulators at this, at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Hester.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Atkins.
During the Building and Grounds Committee meeting, we did discuss, you know, how, I don't think anybody likes the idea of modulators, you know, security concerns, you know, students having to go to the restroom, there's no restroom out there, bringing the students in and out. It's tough, you know, it's challenging on the students and the staff. However, you know, I think it's, if we're talking about learning loss and getting students back to where they need to be, cutting those classroom sizes down, and I think we had, what was like, Room 140 right next to the cafeteria, that's terrible, you know? Nobody's going to be able to get a good quality education like that. So I think I'm in favor of the modulators at this point. And hopefully, we can find some kind of resolution in the future to expand that school as needed, or, you know, get that rezoning done.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins. Additional comments from board members?
Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. White.
I think whatever intervention we choose for the capacity relief at Jordan Springs will come at a cost. It can be financial, it could be instructional. Restructuring our classrooms at Jordan Springs means interference to our students' learning. One of the examples we had was specifically music and art. I had the opportunity to tour the facility today. And just the thought of removing an art room, the way that this art teacher has set up the art room, the alay that shows these students' work, they get to have a sense of pride every time that they walk into that room. There was a student group that was a community chorus group. They would lose the opportunity to practice in the mornings or in the afternoons for these essential programs. I don't think we should ever have our students bear the cost of these restructuring programs when we have an option for modulators. We respect and honor and cherish all of our students. And we have a responsibility to educate and provide services for them in the best capacity that we can. Another room that is on the table for restructuring would be the physical therapy and occupational therapy room that is adjacent to the gym. Asking anyone to be put in that room with the constant echoes and the acoustics, not to mention the noise from the cafeteria in the gym at whatever hours of the day. We cannot ask our students and our teachers to absorb that cost. So I am in full support of the modulators. I cannot support anything else than a quality education and essential access for all of our students. And I believe this means modular classrooms. I would ask other board members and community members to join me on this position and advocate for always addressing our capital necessities, essential expansions to schools to accommodate our current impending and unavoidable growth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. White. Additional comment from board members?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Comstock.
Mrs. White, I really appreciate those comments. Thank you for that. This is a topic that I've felt very torn about, and I keep finding myself going back and forth regarding. And what I fear and what I don't want to happen is that these modulators become fixed assets, permanent structures at Jordan Springs. We have to, we and downtown collectively have to do a better job of planning for the growth that is here, that has been here, and that we have not, as a county, recognized and properly planned for. And so, that's on us. We need to start having those conversations. And I know that we've encouraged having that. So I look forward to having those conversations. I have taught in schools where things like the alternative option have happened, where we've used rooms that were not intended as classrooms as classrooms. I know of teachers who have had that situation. And you're right, Mrs. White, it's not optimal. It's not what our students deserve, in any case. And so I think that I'm glad to see that we're pushing this. I hope that this becomes the norm, that every time there's a situation like this, where our students' learning is going to be impacted, that we're looking at, how can we lessen that impact? And how can we continue their instruction? Because I think there, I can recall, and I've observed, and I've lived through, and I've seen, and I've heard of teachers in situations, that this relief did not come fast enough. So while I have been back and forth with this, I am in support of the modulators right now. And moving forward, I think that we, as a board, need to continue these conversations, and that we need to keep the students and their learning as our focus.
Thank you, Mr. Comstock. Additional comments from board members? I'll share, would agree with Ms. White, Mr. Comstock, in terms of learning and the best environment for that, and toward the school, towards Stonewall, elementary schools as well regarding this. And I think my concern or question throughout this process has been, what has changed since October, when we were told that this was not necessarily an issue? And that, in fact, on our capital improvement plan, we put a expansion, it's one of the lowest priority items for three-point-something million dollars. And now we're told that an expansion would cost nine-point-something. And so I guess that's the question that I have, is what item has changed? We do know that there's been expansion in Stone and Bridge. But it just seems, and appreciate Dr. Hummer taking the issue seriously, but it just seems we do have a lot of priorities in our division that have been waiting for assistance. And this one first heard about just a few weeks ago. And so that is my concern with this, is I do feel, as you mentioned, Mr. Comstock, there's not relief coming to some teachers that have been waiting for it for a while. And that's why I can't support moving forward in this way, because I do think there are other priorities that are, have been pressing for a number of years, not just a couple of weeks. And so I do think there are some options on the table potentially that could get us to the coming year. We've already talked, I think, at nauseam about what we're going to experience in the south side of our county. I think we're going to have a very similar discussion. And moving forward would allow us a variety of options to address not just Jordan Springs, but other schools that I think we're going to have some similar concerns with as we look at building and expansion. And agree, Mr. Comstock, we need to, as opposed to putting out fires, which I almost feel like this is, and it is a fire, I'm not denying that, but we need to come from a comprehensive approach as to the growth of our county and the vision that this board, combined with the downtown, has. And so agree with the sentiment on that, and feel like the data that we are going to get from that study will help inform the decisions that we make. So that's my stance. All right, any further discussion?
I guess my hope would be, Dr. Hummer, that if you learn of other, and if staff learns of other situations where this type of thing is happening, that we're back here adding modulators in other buildings, I suppose, until we have that planned growth built out. And that this isn't just, I don't believe in my heart that this is just one school getting special treatment. That's not what I think this is. And I don't think that's what you're accusing this of being. However, I think that, you know, I think that we have to keep student learning, unimpacted student learning as our focus. And I think that this is, this is the path. It comes at a cost, but this is the best way to do that for our students right now.
All right, appreciate it. All right, let's proceed to vote on this issue. And we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote.
On exactly what are we voting on?
Oh, great question. There's no motion. Thank, Mr. Lake, you are wonderful. We've been in discussion here, and appreciate your reminding. There is not a motion on the table currently.
So, Mr. Chairman, the motion would be that we allow staff to proceed with the plan for modular, for the addition of modular units at Jordan Springs Elementary School.
Second.
All right. And with that, Mr. Comstock, could we add in, is there any financial need or amendment to that, that we would need to have? Dr. Hummer?
So, Mrs. Camery, I don't know if you want to add anything to this, but this is something we did work out to check on the funds. Is this something that is accurate, or we still have to look into that, Mrs. Camery?
Just thinking about making sure we speed up the process-
Yes, sir.
-if it were to be in place, want to get the motion as full as possible.
Yeah. At this point in time, the only place we would be able to get those funds are of the Capital Projects Fund, which means your approved list and the Capital Projects Fund, something will drop off.
Okay.
If that helps you. So we'll have to look at that fund, because of categorical funding.
So just to clarify-
Yes, sir.
-wanting to make sure that the motion that's presented encompasses any language that would be needed to move forward with the ordering before the 31st? Or do we need another meeting if the vote were to pass?
If the vote were to pass, we can order it before the March 31st.
Okay. So there's no additional language that's needed to make sure dollar amounts are in there or anything like that? Perfect.
No.
All right. Just wanted to make sure we were, had the right motion before us that would allow staff to proceed if it were to pass. All right, we have a motion and a second to move forward with modular classrooms at Jordan Springs Elementary as presented from a recommendation from staff. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Lake?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Comstock?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
I'll vote yes as well. Vote passes. All right.
Final motion from Buildings and Grounds, Mr. Chairman, is that I recommend approval of the minutes from the Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting held on March 14, 2023.
All right, we have a motion before us to approve the minutes of the Building and Grounds Committee meeting held on March 14, 2023. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made properly seconded to approve the Building and Grounds Committee minutes as presented. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Minutes are approved. Next, we have the Student Conduct and Committee Meeting Report. Ms. Mrs. White.
Okay. The Student Conduct and Support Committee met at Frederick County Public Schools Administering Building on March 7, 2023. The meeting was called to order at 5:01 PM, and a copy of the minutes has been provided to each board member. During the meeting, the committee went into closed session to review and discuss individual student matters that would involve specific students and particular information contained in their scholastic records, including violations of the Code of Conduct pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-371, 3711A2. After reconvening and certifying in the closed session, the committee voted unanimously to approve Student A's reentry request within contingency of a threat assessment, continued monitored progress, confirmation of results pending charges. Should the findings have discrepancies, we will reinitiate the Student Conduct and Support Committee process to investigate those findings. The matter does not require further action by the full board, and the meeting adjourned at 5:57 PM. Action items coming out of this meeting is recommend approval of the minutes of the Student Conduct and Support Committee meeting held on March 7, 2023.
And a second.
All right, we have a motion and second to recommend the approval of the meeting minutes for the Student Conduct and Support Committee meeting held on March 7. As Mrs. White indicated, there's no further action outside of the meeting minute approval that's required from the board at this time related to this matter. Any discussion on the minutes? All right, all in favor of approving the minutes as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Okay. That brings us to a proclamation. We've already approved the proclamation for Public School Volunteer Week, which is April the 7th through the 21st. And appreciate those who volunteer within our system, day in and day out. And we'll have more to share about that in our April meeting. Next would be an amendment to the 2023 School Board meeting schedule. And for those that have that, that would be an adjustment of our April 18 scheduled board meeting, and moving that meeting to April the 25. And the rationale for that is that the Board of Supervisors meeting is not until April the 19. And so it would put our board in a position to be able to respond to a budget in a timely manner that would allow our staff and team- in a timely manner that would allow our staff and team to move forward with contracts and planning. Is there a motion to amend the School Board Meeting calendar?
So moved.
All right. We have a motion and a second. And so, the, again, the motion is to move the April 18 meeting to April the 25th for budget and planning purposes. Any discussion? All right. All in favor of doing, so say the purpose saying aye.
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 Opposed? All right. We've amended our School Board Meeting calendar. All right. Next on the agenda is board member comments. Are there any?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Atkins.
I'd like to address the three alleged instances that have happened and have rocked our community and the schools. I'd like to say those are, those allegations are sickening. I commend our Superintendent, Dr. Hummer, on his immediate transparency and responsiveness to the community. The community entrusts us with keeping the children safe. If these allegations are true, then we have failed. We have programs and policies, trainings, the whole kink kaboodle in place to help protect our students. So, what do we do to get better? It is my belief that anyone who harms a child should be prosecuted to the fullest extent of the law and should never be in contact with children again. There should be no quarter or lighter sentences handed down to these people when it comes down to harming children, especially from a position of authority. The county has my commitment and that I will push for the harshest of punishments for these alleged crimes to set the tone and deter any further occurrences.
All right. Further comments from the board?
I've got a couple.
Mr. Hester.
Or actually, just one. It is springtime. It's getting warmer out. It seems like there's a lot of, obviously, there's a lot of sporting events, a lot of activities going on at the schools. So, I just, it, you know, Mr. Lake said something to me, or said something a while back that said, yeah, that says, when you want to clear your mind, go to a school, go to an activity, go to a choral band concert, go to a sporting event. So, we've got a lot of great stuff going on in our school system, and if you've got free time, find something at one of our schools. Each one of them has something going on all the time.
Thank you, Ms. Hester. Mrs. White.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to extend our, the Red Bud District's deepest condolences to the family of Ms. Brenda Effler. It's a huge loss to our community, especially to the Greenwood Mill School community, and you will be missed, and we are so grateful for the, over decade of service that you provided in regards to the sexual allegations. Allegations of teachers having inappropriate relationships with students have been reported with alarming frequency in our division. This behavior is never acceptable, and FCPS is committed to protecting our students. Frederick County Public Schools and School Board is dedicated to providing a safe learning environment free from the threat of any misconduct or inappropriate relationships. One of the ways we do this, as Dr. Hummer has and principals have stated, is through the Regulation 567R-D. Expectations through this policy are clear, and FCPS and the School Board holds employees to high standards. Investigations into allegations have been transparent, initiated rapidly, and are conducted thoroughly and diligently. It's important that the public understand and aware that FCPS has taken steps to address these concerning allegations, and that we encourage any and all individuals with any concerns to report them to school administration.
Thank you, Ms. White. Other board member comments? All right.